July 27, 2023 meeting to order. We welcome everyone out. It's nice to have visitors. It gets kind of lonely here. So at this time, we'd like to start with a word of prayer by Member Wilson, and then everyone would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow as before the regiff, the opportunity we have to gather together in the capacity of the Planning Commission. And we are grateful for the community in which we live, such a beautiful place and such great people. We're grateful for all that we have here. We ask, as this meeting unfolds, that we may invite your Spirit to attend us, that we may be able to listen to things that are presented and make fair determinations on behalf of the people we serve. Again, we thank thee for all we have, and we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
I have a motion by Member Bass.
Second.
And a second by Member Little. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Any member of the Planning Commission have a conflict of any item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We're down to the public comment. We have three administrative items on. They're all for Wasatch Peaks. If you wish to speak on those, now is the time to do it. We do not hold public hearings for administrative items. So if you'd like to speak regarding development on Wasatch Peak, the time would be now for your public comment. However, item number nine is the Peterson Rezone. That has its own public hearing, so we'd like to ask everyone if you could hold off your comments till that time, till we get to that agenda and speak during the public hearing. So now is the time for public comment. If you have any comment, you can come up and state your name for the record. Okay? We'll move on. No public comment at this time. Okay, item number six. WPR condos, small subdivision.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. Item number six on tonight's agenda is for application number 23.025. This is Wasatch Peaks Ranch requesting approval for a small subdivision of five units, all within one building. I'm sorry, that's not correct. Yes, it is all within one building at the Wasatch Peaks Ranch North Village project, and is identified by the section and township and range numbers in your staff report, and is located at 4213 North Morgan Valley Drive in Peterson. In fact, all three administrative items on tonight's agenda are all part of the North Village project, as suggested by staff that the applicants submit as small subdivisions for the townhomes, the condos, which we're hearing now, and the mountain villages. These are a collection of parcels intended all for multifamily residential dwellings in the North Village. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. There are no fire or engineer comments at this time. This, these applications were resubmitted several times, and the current submittal meets all of county engineer's comments, and we base our approval, or our recommendation for approval off of that. I, along with Josh, can answer any questions you may have. A small error contained within your staff report is about the motions, the nature of... Nope, that's not correct. That's for a later item. Pardon me. The applicant is in the audience tonight, and then the site plan for all three of these small subdivisions, rather for the North Village itself, is scheduled for August 10. And again, the two additional items on tonight's agenda that are administrative will be very similar in nature to this one we're about to hear. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions for either.
Yeah, sorry, let me ask one question. I don't know if it'd be staff or the applicant. We have a certain number of units you're allowed, and this year having five units go in one building, I just wanted to know, does it count as five units from the total, or does it just count as the one?
And now each residential unit created, even though you have multiples in one building, each one's going to be a separate ERU.
Okay.
They're allowed 750 total ERUs. Some of them were allowed to be multifamily, some single-family. This is part of that North Village multifamily area that's allowed in the development agreement. Yeah, so every single residential unit, even the guest houses that were allowed through the development agreement on some of the single-family lots, those will chew up an ERU as well.
Okay. Great. Thanks for explaining that.
I have just one curiosity question, if I may. Gosh, how many units are under construction under now? Do you know that?
There's, my understanding is that there's three under construction, two or three currently under construction. I understand that there's a fourth that will be submitted as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions. Unless we want discussion among ourselves, I'm ready for a motion.
I can make it. There were no conditions listed on the staff report, were there?
The stipulations listed on the staff report were the standard stipulations that they meet all state, federal, and local requirements, and they pay their consulting fees before regulation.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve the WPR condos, small subdivision, preliminary and final plats, application number 23.025. Allowing for an eight-lot subdivision.
Has the air there?
Sorry.
Well, that's the one that's attached.
Oh, yeah, that's the one that's attached.
So it should just say five lots instead?
It's not, they're not lots, condos.
Five?
Five units.
Unit condos.
Is that still the right application number? Yeah, it is.
So where's the proper address? Is that the proper address for?
Yeah, that's...
It's all the same.
So can we just say five condo units in one building?
Yep.
And the land located approximately 4312 North, not Morgan Valley Drive, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated July 27, 2023.
Okay. I have a motion by Member Wilson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and second by Member Little. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number seven.
Item number seven is for application number 23.026. And this is again WPR requesting approval for a small subdivision of eight units identified by the same township and range numbers as before in the North Village. Staff is recommending approval for this as it meets all minimum code requirements. And I, along with Josh, can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions on this one?
I don't have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant on this one?
I don't have any on any of the...
Okay, if there are no questions, ready for a motion? This is where the bill is.
I can read it again.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve the WPR Mountainville Small Subdivision, Preliminary and Final Plats. Is that the right one?
Yep.
Application number 23.026, allowing for an eight-lot subdivision of land located approximately 4312 North Morgan Valley Drive, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated July 27, 2023.
I have a motion by Member Wilson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Member Little. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number eight.
Madam Chair, item number eight is for application number 232024. This is for the townhomes, a small subdivision of eight units within the North Village, identified by the same township and range numbers as before. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements. I, along with Josh, can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Question on the townhomes? No questions? Ready for a motion again?
I can read it again.
You can read it again?
Madam Chair, I move we forward a positive recommendation to County Commission for... That's not it, sorry. Turned too many pages.
Is that recommendation or approval? This, we...
We approve.
Says approval.
They're all...
They're all, they all were approved.
For some reason, I got the wrong paper on there. Do you guys have the right one on your... Maybe I don't.
On page eight?
I got them. I got them, yeah. Madam Chairman, I move, we approve the WPR Townhomes Small Subdivision, Preliminary and Final Plats, application number 23.024. Allowing for an eight-lot subdivision of land located approximately 4312 North Morgan Valley Drive, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in, listed in the staff report dated July 27, 2023.
Okay, motion by Member Wilson. You have that second again?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Second by Member Little. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number nine.
Madam Chair, item number nine on tonight's agenda is for application number 23.011. That's not right.
030.
030, thank you. The applicant is Mr. Jeff Lowe. He's in the audience tonight. The location for this project is approximately 700 feet north and west of, west Surry Lane and North Morgan Valley Drive, the intersection of those two, in Milton, Utah. Current zoning for the, these two properties, these two parcels is agriculture and rural residential, one acre minimum. The current general plan designation for these two is also split between ranch residential, five acre minimum, and agriculture. The total acreage for these two lots combined is 80.19 acres. The request is to change the future land use map designation from agriculture to ranch residential five, and rezone property, rezone these two properties from agriculture 820 to, and, and with RR1, to RR5, rural residential, five acre minimum. The, so again, I'd like to highlight that the property is split zoned on both the, well, the zoning map, and it's also split on our future land use map. If you'll notice, the, the property, the back portion of it, rather than northern portion of it, does border the city of Morgan for both parcels. Staff has reviewed this project and finds that it meets all minimum code requirements for a zoning map amendment from A20 to RR1, I'm sorry, A20 and RR1 to RR5. There are no fire or engineer comments for this application. Our office has received a handful of calls and emails and some visits. We've gotten mostly just questions about the nature of the rezone and kind of just asking, answering technical questions about those, but we've had some comments, both in, in favor and not in favor of this, of this rezone. Staff is recommending approval from a planning, planning perspective for three basic reasons. One, the proximity to Surry Lane shows those Surry Lane properties zoned as RR5 already. There's some RR10 and RR5 also close by. There, all of those, those parcels on Morgan Valley Drive are split zoned with RR1 as the, the front to Morgan Valley Drive. And then RR5 fits well in this area because it does provide a nice buffer between the higher density in Morgan City and the rural residential density, the one acre minimum density along Morgan Valley Drive. But I, along with Josh, can answer any questions you may have, the applicants, and the property owner, and the audience tonight. And again, this is, the error that I mentioned before is actually in the staff report. We're on the, in the motion, you should be recommending approval to the County Commission for both the zone change and the future land use map change. Thank you.
Make your recommendation either for approval or denial.
But, yes, thank you. But it should include those two items, zone change and future.
The last...
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff? At this time?
I don't have any questions for the staff.
It's just, I don't, I don't know if they've drawn that far. Is there any more detail on what their plans are in terms of five acre, is the whole thing going into five acre lots, as I understand?
Oh, and, and in fact, the split zoning would go away with this change. It would be completely RR5 zoning.
Well, I'm just curious if they've drawn anything, if shells packed where their roads would go, their lanes?
The applicant did not submit any sort of draft concept plan for that, nor is it required by...
I didn't think it was. I was just curious if we saw anything like that.
No, we haven't seen anything like that in our office.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I got a couple. I should probably already know the answers to it. I don't... So say that goes all to RR5. How many acres is it? Eighty, you said?
80.19, to be exact.
So how many lots? Did you guys calculate how many lots are going in?
So if you take those 80 acres, you're going to be subtracting at least somewhere between 25 to 35% for curb gutter sidewalk and those types of improvements. You can calculate the, the number of lots based on that, but it's not a simple division of 80 divided by five acre lots.
And just so I know, and I don't, what is the policy when, when we create roads into something like that? Will that be to county standards? How does that? I guess it depends on what they apply under, right?
They have, the option between the county right of way 60 feet, or they can do a private street. The conversation from last time involved the rural street standards that would apply here as well. They don't have that option quite now, but obviously that'll go to County Commission.
But would that be the minimum street standard for something like that?
Precisely, it would fit here.
And the stuff on Surry Lane, that was a PRUD?
It is a PRUD, yes.
And how many of those lots are actually five acres?
Only one. Only one.
The rest are smaller?
They need two points of ingress egress, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Who needs two points of egress?
Well, they, they couldn't just have one, one road going in.
According to the fire code, you have to have 30 or more single-family units before you need secondary access. Secondary access in our code is not a requirement. The only requirement we have in our code is dead end streets cannot be monitored without the recommendation of approval from the fire department and final approval from the County Commission.
Correct. Okay. Possible, yeah.
Are we required to have a secondary access? But if the fire department says no, and the County Commission says no, then they would have to figure out another way to provide access to all the lots.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? More for the staff or for the applicant?
No.
You have a public hearing?
Yeah, we can go in public hearing.
I listed on, I have both, huh?
Madam Chair, I mean, we go into public hearing for item number nine.
The motion by Member Bass, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Member Little. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now it's time for public hearing. We'd like, invite the public to come up and make comments. It's not going to be a back and forth. This isn't a time for a dialogue, but we will take notes on your comments and maybe try to address those issues. So when you come up, please state your name for the record, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. I see not all it works. Thank you.
Do I have to put a microphone on or something?
It's there, it's there in front of you. It's that flat thing. You can just leave it there.
Oh, right there.
You just leave it there, yep.
All right. Quinn Tucker, born and raised in Morgan County, so I want to keep Morgan as rural as possible, you know? I'm really opposed to any high-density growth. I've heard many rumors about what's going on there, and I just told them, I says, hey, I will call the landowner, talk to him. I did, and he told me his plans, and we'll go over some of these bullet points, and right here, so he wants to go to RR5 and keep it rural residential. I'm totally fine with that. I'll read off the names. I contacted all landowners that border this piece of property. And I'll just read here, kind of what I, so these guys can hear what I've put down. So there's Matt Slate, Jason Holbrook, Clay Rich, Jewel Woolsey, Mike Oliver, Brian Born, Richard Born, which is the owner of next to Surry Lane, Matt Johnson, Bill Ross, Jeff Nielsen, and myself. We're all opposed to high-density, to high-density housing. However, as neighbors that are located on the border of this property, while we are in favor of the plans that Steve Peterson is proposing to rezone this property behind us to RR5, we feel to keep the rural feel of our area, this is the best option compared to high-density housing, which has been proposed in the past and is a possibility if we don't seriously look at this proposal. About six years ago, I was in here, they was that close to passing 350 homes behind you, fifth acre lot, twin homes. We all know growth is coming to our community, but we need to be smart. Don't we want to keep Morgan County a county and still be able to have the rural living? To do this, we have to allow growth the smart way, and this proposal is that. Some of the pros to this is five-plus acre lots. We've, we've talked about, you know, there could be conservation easements imposed on this to so that we don't end up with Surry Lane and have one acre, two acre lots that was supposed to be five. The cons pros are less traffic, and it's going to protect our home values for us rural home people. The cons are, I know that the, it opens up the area to high-density housing and the possibility of being annexed into the city. I know that they've already been looking at that. That would lose our rural feel and the possibility of lowering all of our home values there. So at least for those that I'm speaking for, so we don't all get up, if Steve's willing to stick to those standards, I think it's a definite plus for Morgan County, because growth is coming our way, no matter whether we like it or not. And if we can kind of steer it to keep it as rural and country living as possible, I'm all in favor, and so are all these that are on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vaughn Nickerson, I live just kind of further north there in Milton, and I've been pretty vocal about changing our future land use map and area plan in the Milton area. As Quinn stated, you know, it seems like every year we're fighting this high density. One thing that I can appreciate Steve doing is putting a plan together, trying to maintain that rural feeling, to not just try to cram these lots down our throats. And as Quinn stated, you know, I've talked to Quinn and Brian quite a bit over the phone and in person, and I really, I believe this is how things are supposed to work. As people come in, they want to make a change, come to the people and get the support of the people, versus coming to the county and being like, well, this is what you're going to get. Like Quinn, we always want to keep it the way it is, and no growth, and no new homes, and keep it what we've got, but we know that growth is coming. But this is kind of that controlled growth that I think Milton's been asking for, is let us have some, a little bit of say, you know, let's talk to these developers and, and find it, find some common ground. And I think this is a great way to protect that rural feeling, and try to, try to keep that urban sprawl kind of in the city and kind of where it is right now. And I, I, I'm in support of what he's doing, and, like, if he's going to do what, what he's told these other people, his plan, I think it's a good plan, and it'll help to maintain that open rural feeling in Milton.
My name's Nadine Steinfeld. I've only lived here three years, and I'm not really good at that, I get this, I get really emotional. But if you were to look, I live on Morgan Valley Drive, how beautiful that is, and then how ugly that is. I'm sorry, but it's ugly. I want this, we moved here to keep this as much as possible. I realize, you know, that stuff will happen, but to take all of the, the farming and the agriculture stuff away from these people and this, I'd go ahead and keep building over there. You know, we, I, I don't want a park city, and that's what's happening up there in Peterson. We're going to have a park city. And I know I'm just one person, but I just want you to know, you know, how I feel. When there's, when there's, and I'm not saying anything about Steve's thing. I, I, he doesn't know, but I know him. My daughter knows him. And, but if we can keep it, if we can keep things and not quit trying to move things like Surry Lane, five acres is five acres. It isn't one acre. It isn't, you know, what, how did that ever even get passed? That's my question. I just, I don't know. I think we should try to keep it on the side as, as a country as possible. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Maybe we go out of public hearing.
Motion by Member Bass, move out of public hearing. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
And second by Member Little. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're out of public hearing. Go into a discussion. You would like?
Can we hear from the applicant?
If you'd like to. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Just like what the plan is that he's been telling everybody the plan is, I guess.
I'm Steve Peterson, the owner.
Jeff Lowe.
Basically, I've owned this property. Quinn had mentioned, six years ago, I've owned it 14 years. The gardeners owned it before me. I did a hard money loan on this property, not a developer like the gardeners. I ended up with the property foreclosed back in '09, 2010. Didn't know what to do with it, to be real candid with you. So we sat on this for a long time. Many potential developers have come to me and said, hey, we would like to do this, we'd like to do that. And it was just a piece of investment property. And about four years ago, four or five years ago, I bought a, I've owned a ranch in Wyoming for quite some time, but I bought a second ranch up in Hiner Canyon. And so I spent quite a bit of time in Morgan County. And in that timeframe, my wife and I have taken a 1915 home built by James Hopkins, and we've preserved that historical value of that. Quinn actually helped me add on to that. And so we're believers in trying to maintain the quality of life, and I'm not a professional developer. I hired Jeff, Jeff's worked with me, known each other for 30 years. He's more of a developer, and he said, what do you want to do with this property? And we have been approached to put half-acre lots in there. My wife came to me about three weeks ago and said, you know... My wife came to me about three weeks ago and said, you know, we live on 40 acres, 35 acres in Far West, we've been totally encroached. I can't even flood our fields anymore. I've had to spend a hundred grand to just sprinkle, because my next-door neighbor says I'm going to flood their basement. And we just got to a point where we decided, what do we want to do with that ground up there? We love Morgan, we love Hyder Canyon, we own the left-hand, Fort Cuyahoga over to Francis Canyon. And we decided that we wanted to build something that we would want to live in. And I met with all the neighbors last night to really find out, you know, because there's been so much opposition, and then really these other developers wanting to buy my ground, but it's not me. There's been so much opposition, I thought, well, do we want to live up there? I don't want to live somewhere people don't want me to live. And, long story short, we've come up with the idea of these five-acre lots. And there'd be anywhere from 10 to 12 lots in there. And it'd be something that we would potentially like to move up here. And we would own that property along the river. And my brother-in-law, I've got a son that's interested, I've got a number of other people, Colton Swan, Colton's tired of waiting, you know, he's probably going to fell on me. But, long story short, I think I want to produce something that I'm proud to live in, personally. And the real advantage for me, it's only 30 minutes to my ranch, so.
The only thing I was going to say is I can vouch for Steve more than anything, because I've been with him for 30 years. And when he says he's going to do something, he's going to do it. And we know that that lot, that ground could be developed in a lot more lots, which means a lot more money. But when he says he's going to do something, he doesn't. And I've seen it 50 times in all these different projects we've done together, so. As far as the road goes, Steve, you had asked about the road. Our plan is to build, we have a nice concept to do it. The plan is to build the roads under the county ordinances, county standards, and then turn it over to the county. But the plan is not to have that as a private road or anything like that. That's the plan on the concept by right now, so.
And Brian, that's our next-door neighbor, his father, Dick Bourne's a real close friend of mine, he approached me, and he said, you know, I would like to buy that some acreage behind you. And I said, well, I got to sell you 20 acres, I can't sell you any less. And I did that for one reason, to create some green space. Brian lives right there. And also, I just want something I'm proud of. At the end of the day, when I leave this earth, I want to have something that I put my name on it. I think anyone would tell you that goes up to the Hopkins Ranch, the old Hopkins Ranch, that it has been beautified, all new fences, it has created, it's created an ambiance there. We love the outdoors, we love Morgan. I have family here, my uncle Bob, my uncle Roger, both live in Milton. Bob's moved to Southern Utah now. So I've spent a lot of time here, got a lot of ties to Morgan. And I really respect, I apologize for not remembering your name, the last lady that spoke, because we feel that same way in Far West, we don't want anybody destroying our view. And the only way I can protect my view, I started with seven acres, and I had to buy it. And that was the only way I could protect it. Otherwise, it would have been third-acre lots today.
I'll just add that we, you know, as far as development goes, we've done quite a few projects together. We've never done high-density. We're actually against high-density. We don't like it. We like ranchette style. We're doing a project up in Idaho that's three-acre ranchette, it's beautiful, up in the mountains, beautiful property, so.
Jeff's doing that. I'm not the developer. I support it.
But that's what we're about, is ranchette-style developments. We have no intentions for patio homes or high-density. That's just not what we like to do, and not what we're going to do.
And I know there's pressure, I think of my grandkids, I've got two or three grandkids, I think of them, where are they going to live? And we've got to tackle this problem of where our children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren live. So there's a need for density, but I don't think it's on this piece of property, for sure. Any other questions while we're up here?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. I'm actually a little torn. I came in here knowing what I wanted to do, but I'm a little torn, actually. So, with stuff that we have had in the past, like if it wasn't around stuff that was similar, didn't go with the future land use map, we recommended denial, which, like, I still feel good about that, I don't feel bad about it one bit. I think some differences there is that there was, I don't want to call it banter, but there was no community support for the previous one. There's a whole list of community support for this. I do agree that five acres is better than half-acre lots. I don't know. And I've been talking to Shane, since he's the one that represents the Milton area, and he said that he feels good about it, and like, our other option is to have, like, if we turn this down, to have somebody come in with higher-density housing and get approved. Given our circumstances recently.
Josh, could you just explain to the public, with the Shurley Lane situation, can you just explain how that went from an RR5 to where it is now? This is going to be different.
Our previous code included something called a PRUD, which allowed for some negotiation between the developer or the property owner and the commission to trade amenities for additional density. I think that's what happened there. So, you have three-acre lots, I'm not sure what amenities the county got, but that's how the PRUD was, that's how the dip was handled back then.
But this will be five-acre lots, this is not a PRUD?
Our code requires that each lot will be required to have five acres minimum. They'll be required to have the minimum amount of frontage, which means they're going to be putting in either a private lane, private street, or a public street. The current public street standards for rural areas is going through the change process to remove curb gutter sidewalks, so that might be something that they'll want to look to.
I have one quick question, just out of curiosity again. On a map with the yellow outline, I noticed there's an intention on it, what is that? Is that, they still own all that property, and why is it out? Do you know?
It goes all the way to the river.
Except for that one parcel from the...
I'm sorry, that's...
That little mix.
So is that the creek boundary?
Yeah, they border the city. And I've had conversations with the city manager. They've requested that any property that borders the city, that we direct the developer or the property owner to them to talk about annexation. And this borders the city.
Wait, say that again?
I have been asked by the city manager to direct property owners and developers to talk to the city about annexation when it borders the city.
So that they would become part of Morgan City?
That's correct.
But they don't have to? They don't have to?
No, the property owners don't have to. However, it is an option.
So who owns this then? The guy across in the city? The city boundary does not follow the creek right there, and I don't know...
That is a creek. Yeah, look at the other map.
No, but the, but the city boundary does not go to it.
Oh, the city boundary.
Yeah. I don't know why.
Oh, so he owns, he owns part in the city, part in the county?
No, the guy across the creek, yeah.
The lines may be incorrect. I believe, if I went and did some research, I imagine I would discover that the city boundary goes to the Shurley.
Goes all the way through, okay.
I'm handling property in Wyoming, and on the Bear River, the problem that they have enforcing that is that the river moves.
That's correct.
And that's the real problem, I'd rather have that problem on the Bear River, because it brays out right there on the water, and you can't order. I think this is the same problem, but as I've looked at that, where do I enter? I meant to turn the shit across, and it's actually saying, well, on a year like this, if it decides to move to the east or the west, it changes the boundary. So it's kind of hard, because it totally works the city, or it's a problem.
And the blue line's just the division of the parcels?
I don't have the map up.
Yeah, it looks like it's just the two parcels there.
So in your experience, Josh, have you seen, if the city wanted to annex that, would they really want to do, how would they get to it? Are they going to go clear, I guess they're just going to follow the street back?
Development at that kind of scale is all about making a pencil. And so the more lots you have, the more you can spread out the cost of extending infrastructure. Plus, in the state of Utah, I believe there's pioneering agreements, which means that if the developer were to put in the infrastructure, and then other lots in front of where that infrastructure went in, then they would have to repay the developer for the cost of that infrastructure. So there are ways to extend infrastructure. If they were to annex into the city, you would still divide out the 25% to 35% for infrastructure, which would take the 80 acres down to about 55 acres approximately, which at 10,000 square foot lots gives you about 226 lots. That's probably a sufficient number of lots to spread out the cost to put in the infrastructure and the connections, both water, sewer, and the streets.
I have a question, again.
Yeah.
So, you said that, was it if they rezone, the city wants them to talk to them, or just property owners in general, the city wants them to talk to them?
No, I was asked by the city manager and the city attorney that if anybody came in who was interested in developing along the boundary of city, of the city of Morgan, to have them talk to the city.
Okay, so here's my next question.
Okay.
Playing the devil's advocate here a little bit. We rezone this to five-acre lots, or RR5. They go to the city, they get annexed in, are there five-acre lots allowed in the city?
Well, they could annex it in as five acres, but a zone would be attached to that property at the time of annexation. However, once you start parceling it out, like into five-acre parcels, it makes it very, it makes it more difficult to start annexing all that property to make a connection to Morgan Valley Drive, because they all, and once they're sold, then all the property owners would have to agree to annex in. The only way that, if I understand the annexation law correctly, and it's, there's a lot there, so I may make this, I may be wrong, but the city can, based on an annexation map or whatever, bring property in, as long as the majority of those property owners, 51%, are okay with the annexation.
But they can't change the zoning from like, five to one, or five to half?
Once it's within the city, they can change it to any zone within the city that meets or follows their general plan, or not. Because the general plan's discretionary.
Do you know if Morgan City has five-acre lots?
I doubt it. It's more of a rural-type zone. I would imagine that the largest zone that they allow zoning would be half-acre lot. That would be my guess. They might have one acre, I don't know, I don't know their code. I do know they have 10,000 square foot lots.
Because you know what we always say, never trust a developer.
We do?
I do.
I do that.
Mr. Tucker has a question or a comment, but we're not in public.
Yeah, we're not in public hearing.
If you want to go back to public hearing, you'd have to make a motion to go back in.
We'll go back in, if we want to take any more public comment.
Sure, Madam Chair, maybe we go back in public hearing?
Okay, I have a motion to go back in public hearing.
I'll second it.
Second by member Little, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're back in public hearing.
Okay, so this is exactly what I mentioned about, that we're worried about annexation, because we don't have any control over that. We would end up with quarter and fifth-acre lots in there, so they could spread their costs out. So, when I mentioned in there, you'll see that, that there's a conservation easement. Okay? So, do you know what a conservation easement is? So Steve is looking into that, he's put his ranch in it already?
No, it's not put in yet.
It's not put in yet, but they're working on it.
My neighbor's put this in, and I'm looking at it.
So he's willing to look at this, he's going to keep the frontage. When he said he's going to build, he's going to keep the frontage along the creek, so there's no other landowners. So they would have to go through Steve to annex that. And he said, I won't let them do that. Once he, if he puts it into this conservation easement, it is five acres, no matter whether the city gets it, whoever gets it, it's stuck there forever. Five-acre lots. So they can't do that. That's another reason why I'm pro for this, because if he will do those things, that's going to protect our five-acre lots, so if somebody doesn't buy them, no matter who buys them, developer, whatever, you can't now make quarter-acre lots or half-acre lots on there. So just so you understand what he's trying to do.
That's helpful.
That really helps. Like I said, when people get misinformation, like you said, I would be leery too, because I don't trust developers either. So, anyway.
Sorry, Nadine. I actually went into the city just a couple weeks ago, because this question came up with a group of people, and they were very firm that there is no desire to annex anything west of the creek. And they said that, that's what they told, that's what she told me. And she showed me the annexation declaration map, and she says, for anything to be annexed into the city, it must be on this map. If it's not on this map, we won't even take application. And she pointed out a couple spots that are pending and that are working on it. And she says, after the last, what was it, the Morgan, whatever we did a few years ago, the uprising in Milton about that possible annexation of Young Street and up onto the hill, they removed it from the map, because they said they didn't, they're like, we don't want people thinking that's our plan. And she says, that's why we removed it, because of the, just the comments that came out of Milton about annexation, that the city determined that the creek is the boundary, and that they have no desire to annex anything west of the creek. So, that was my conversation two weeks ago, over at the city. She handed me the map and said, this is what's on the plan. I don't know if that helps or anything, but I was getting a little frustrated, as soon as it comes up, let's annex, and let's add more lots, and let's subdivide, and let's make more money. It's like, can we just keep it simple? Let's see what he wants, and leave annexation up by the sewer ponds and Ernie Durant's away from Milton.
We have new life in our public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing's still open, right?
Yeah, we reopened it, so state your name and...
Okay, I'm Clay Rich, and I live at 179 South Morgan Valley Drive. And the property borders me on two sides, and I'll be just a point of this particular landowner, his request for a five-acre rezone granted. And when it comes to annexes into the city, the city can change their mind tomorrow, and they change their mind. And just like the county does, every time there's an election or appointment in the county, there's always somebody that thinks are smarter than the last person. I think this is the very best way to have a development pattern on this particular piece of property that is in harmony with the general and area plans. And I think that a failure to approve this particular request is an invitation to the city, sooner or later, to annex. And the city can, like I said, the city can say anything they want to about annexing, but they change their mind with every election. And I honestly, I've seen two people come in and request to annex this particular piece of property already, and the city didn't have an appetite to, the things have changed. And once again, I like the development pattern, this will have more of an impact on me than most people. And I'm totally 100% in favor of this, and I think it'd be a mistake not to take advantage of this, because what happens when you deny good development ideas and patterns like this, is you wind up with something worse almost every single time. And that's my public comment.
Thank you.
I was just going to mention to confirm what Josh said, is the city has contacted us. And for the record, we said that, and asked if we wanted to put this off and wait for the annexation, and to see what that happened, and we basically said, no, we'd rather go down this road, instead of wait for the annexation.
I, I really sympathize with your thoughts, because I live in that world. But I want, I think history tells us more about an individual than what they say from this podium. In 2010, I bought a ranch. It's the last ranch in Wyoming on the Mary Lake Highway. Have you ever been at DePere River Service Station? It's the River Blacksmith Ranch, it's 4,000 acres roughly. It has some of the most pristine views in northern America of the Uena Mountains. We have a home that we bought in Wild River Ranches, and it's like a Surrey Lane, that kind of a subdivision. And in order to build in Wyoming, in the area, is 35 minimum acres. I've been approached by developer after developer, they drive through my ranch, and they say, God, I could get, these are million dollar lots. And it's been 13 years, and I've turned every one of them away. This isn't about money for me. If it was about money, I would have ran to the city office and said, yes, sign us up, we'll go through the process of annexation. For us, it's about lifestyle. It's about what we love. I love horses, I love horse property, and that's why I've kept both ranches the way they are today. And I, Madam Bass, if you want to, you could look at my history. And I'm in control of this property. And if you want to pass it today, you'll get what I, what we say we'll do. And you can check my history out, you can go back. I'm not a big land developer. I've owned a lot of property, I've sold it to people that have developed it, but I'm not that guy.
Madam Chair, I move we go out of public hearing.
A motion to move out of public hearing by Member Bass.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Member Little, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Out of public hearing. Unless you have some more discussion among the members? Are you ready for a motion? If you want to make the motion, remember to add.
Zone change.
Zone change and future land use map amendment.
Madam Chair, I move we forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the Peterson rezon map amendment and future land use map amendment. Application number 23.030, changing 80.19 acres from A20 and RR1 to RR5 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated July 27th, 2023.
Okay, a motion by Member Bass, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
We'll stick with our plan. Seconded by Member Little, any discussion on this motion?
I just want to say that this is my kind of development, so I'm good with this.
Yeah, I think it fits the area, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is business and staff. Any questions for staff? Staff have any?
Where's the, where's the referendum sitting for La Sarge Peaks? Because I've heard that we shouldn't be passing anything for it with standing referendum, so.
To be clear, there is no referendum from, for WPR right now. It was denied by the county, which is what brought the lawsuit on. Lawsuit is trying to determine that the county dismissed it when they shouldn't have. And so there is no active referendum.
So you'll keep us updated for when we?
Yep, I will keep you updated.
Okay.
There's no more questions? We move on to the minutes. You've gotten all your changes in to Mikel? Ready for a motion?
So I move to approve the minutes.
Motion by Member Bass.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Member Little, all in favor?
Aye. I move to adjourn.
Second it.
We adjourn.